Good evening. I will call the school committee to work. First school committee meeting of the new class here. Are there any public comments? Okay. Review the minutes. I should mention, just generally, that Mary Storrs is out of town and Josh Kowalski had a death in his family. She didn't tell me who and I didn't ask. So our condolences go out to him. So we have just a quorum. Should also mention, for those who don't know, that Susan Prey's husband had a little accident. He's in hospital. I think okay, he has some surgery, which isn't big. So our condolences also out to Prey. Minutes. Does anyone want to review the minutes? Other than comments on that?
Just thank you for your time.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
No favor.
Hi.
A motion to approve. Information needs Broomark. We have a four.
Hello?
Thanks for having us.
I was just gonna say, I'm Emily Richardson. For those of you who don't know me, but I think you all know me.
I'm Rebecca Broomark and we are here on behalf of the Bay State Textiles Recycling Program. I think most of you know about that. But we just thought, and Christine said we had to add humor, so.
You did?
You said, "Humors required."
For the record, she's putting words in my mouth.
So Bay State Textiles takes unwanted textiles. They take, they say they take the good. Okay, it's a good pair of jeans. They take the bad. Okay? Ripped pillowcase. And the ugly. So the good, the bad, the ugly. They take everything. This poor guy, he's kind of ugly and old.
But you can't get rid of stuffed animals, so this is awesome.
Right. So, okay, so we want to just tell you about the ways that we think, and, you know, I'm not sure if you've, how much you know about it, but the wins with this program for both the school, the town, and the environment. Okay? So basically, it's a new revenue stream for the PTO, a new fundraising mechanism. Luckily, checks are cut to the PTO from Bay State Textile and they come directly to the school every month. It's based on weight, so it's five cents a pound. Whatever anyone puts into the bin is five cents a pound for the school or $100 a ton. So that comes out to $100 a ton. There's no upfront cost for the school and no fees. There's no staff monitoring of these boxes. And we will, Emily and I will be the volunteers from the PTO in charge of the program and we will monitor the boxes, especially in the beginning, but on an ongoing basis and also publicize it so that the town and the school committee know that. So it's a win for the town. There's going to be convenient locations for donating unwanted textiles. That will decrease the trash tipping costs at the dump because there'll be less volume in there at the transfer station. And it'll bring the community together for a great, like, town-wide recycling program. Obviously, for the environment, it's a win. Decrease unnecessary waste that's just thrown out and goes into the landfill, lessen emission gases. Down the line, it could be a win for teachers and students with sort of hands-on learning curriculum around this and everything. Okay, so as you may or may not know, the Concord Public School District, as well as CCHS, has, is on board with the program. They're launching at the end of this month. Our hope is possibly to launch at the same time for our schools so that we can kind of all be on board with the two schools regionally. So the deal with the program, the school box program, is it requires, there's a minimum of two boxes placed in town. So at the August Board of Selectmen's meeting, we went and we spoke about it and basically asked if we could place a box at CPS and at the transfer station. They are talking to Gary Davis at the transfer station about that possibility. And the Board of Selectmen basically said they won't move ahead with the program really until they're sure that the school committee is okay with having one bin on school property. So here we are to talk to you about it. So the potential revenue for the PTO with this program, basically, on average, every American discards about 81 pounds of unwanted textiles a year. So if you, with a population of, you know, a little over 5,000 in town, that's about 212 tons of unwanted textiles thrown away in Carlisle alone. And so, but 95% of those textiles thrown out can be recycled or reused. So that takes a ton of trash, or many tons of trash, out of, out of the waste stream. So the good, the bad, the ugly. Now, what would the process look like? School committee agrees to house one collection box on school property. Emily and I work to obtain the town approval to house one collection box somewhere on town property. Probably transfer station could be somewhere else. Then Bay State Textiles will deliver a bin, a free metal collection box, to this location, predetermined location, and they provide weekly pickups and empty the bin. Okay? Now, if we decide on a location for the bin and somehow it doesn't work out, they can just come and move it. You know, they deal with all of that. And we will also provide publicity for the program, flyers, mosquito articles, posters, just making sure everybody in Carlisle, not just the school community, but everybody knows about this and that every, all the proceeds come back to our school. We're also scout leaders in town, so we have, we're connected with all the scouts and it would be a great project for scouts to take on. They could, you know, say there was a bin at the transfer station, they could go on dump day and kind of say, "Look," you know, and tell people about the program. So we thought that was a neat tie-in. We plan to monitor the bin at least twice weekly. We're here all the time anyway, you know, and we can go to the dump and monitor. But we're here, we can report any potential overflow directly to the program, Bay State Textiles, and they normally will pick up immediately within a day. And once they get the items, they, they basically weigh the textiles and then, based on the weight, they just cut a check to the PTO. So, let's see. They have an excellent track record. They, their service track record is excellent, the weekly box emptying, the weight reporting is considered excellent, and also the rebate payments come out very regularly. They have many letters of recommendation from towns. There's 90 school districts in Massachusetts participating. They have letters of recommendation that I have here, you can take a look at, from Lexington, Beverly, Sharon, many, you know, similar towns to ours, big and small towns, and basically all the recommendations are very positive. So what we're asking you for is to, the school committee for us, to decide to launch this program officially at CPS and then decide on a location that makes sense on school property. You know, we were thinking about this and kind of, the first choice might be somewhere in the front of the campus, so it's visible, a visible box. Greatest visibility may be next to the gym, so it's not, like, interfering with the main parking lot. Now, I don't know if there's a working video camera next to the gym. Emily saw a sign. I don't know if it's just to deter people, but there's some sign saying, "Video surveillance 24 hours." I don't know if that's real or not.
Well, the boxes, the collection boxes have decals on them that actually say surveillance cameras are in use.
So this is just a mock-up?
It's just a deterrent.
Prevent vandalizing and theft.
And apparently, they've had proven success with that. But if there was an actual camera, it might make sense to put it near that just in case. There are items that aren't possible to donate, so, you know, obviously, most things are footwear, clothing, you know, pillowcases, towels, everything, linens, stuffed animals. But there's a few things, such as, you know, mattresses, couch cushions, things like that, that they will not accept. But Emily and I, you know, will be closely monitoring these bins and we're willing, I'm willing to take anything to the transfer station that would fit in my big SUV. If it's a mattress, probably can't. If it's a huge carpet, probably can't.
I don't believe those.
But, you know, that's a minimal risk.
What does it do with the lawn?
So here's what they do. They, so they, they basically grade all the material into three grades. So they have, 45% of the stuff is clothing that can be either readily donated, and by the way, they ship globally, so this is like an effort of donating around the world. Some of the items can be repaired, so it provides jobs, either in the U.S. or abroad, to repair the clothing and then donate it. So 45%.
Or sell it.
Or sell it. So 45% is clothing. 20%, they call it a fiber conversion grade, so it's basically, you can't, you know, it's not clothing, it's not, in its current form, it's not functional, but they pull out, say, the stuffing from stuffed animals. Or, you know, they pull out material and then that is used to create things like insulation, car seat cushions, bus cushions, you know, around the, around the U.S. and the globe. So, and then 30%, it turns into like an industrial, commercial wiping cloth grade. So that can be used everywhere around the world. And so it's really just the 5% of what they take in that they can't use. So it's really all used, you know, and it's stuff that's going into the landfill now. It's an educational opportunity for our community, for our students, and it's just a feel-good win-win. And we get money. You know, it's like, we went to the Board of Selectmen meeting, they said, "Well, we already have bins for this," you know, at the transfer station. And, but none of those bins come back to our town in any way. And all the money even from the transfer station will come to our PTO. So it's kind of a, just, you know.
Have to make it clear, transfer station, that's its people.
Yes. Not that we don't, not that we want to take away all their business either, but so many people are probably used to donating there. But if we really publicize this, especially in the school, you know, and in the paper, people will hear about it, we'll hype it up, you know? And so I think it'll be a successful way to raise money. Do you want to?
I was just gonna say, I think the, often the bins at the transfer station are piled high with stuff overflowing.
That's just because they don't empty them.
They don't empty them.
Probably not. But it would hopefully decrease that risk. And if we needed like a bigger, they have bigger, kind of municipal-sized boxes that you could have at a transfer station. And that, you know, with the box at the school, it could be four by four by six. The other, they have other ones that are kind of longer, so if they had room for it, we could have even more at their transfer station.
I have to talk to David. We could put a backlog to amazing, possibly in the high level.
Right.
You know, you want to make it easily because that's supposed to be drawn while it's still not nice, even though it's.
You don't want it to be nice.
Decorated and it's gonna look nice. But Carlisle tells we don't want it to be.
No. You don't want it front and center in front of the school.
And it has to be in a spot where the snow can be removed from in front of it and it's not, you know, we don't want it to interfere with any snow removal.
Like, apparently, I guess at one school, it was kind of near a sidewalk, but then they didn't take into consideration the sidewalk, snow removal equipment kind of would bank, you know? And so they just had it moved. They came and moved it, you know, to where.
So if they come every week, they can move anytime.
Yeah.
It becomes.
Yeah. So the box is four feet by four feet by six feet, so it's not humongous, and it holds approximately 300 to 500 pounds of donated textiles.
What, is there a minimum, like, you guys, if we don't get a minimum number of, amount of clothing or materials in there, are they gonna pull it?
I don't know.
I don't think so. I mean, basically, where is it? It says that this box is placed indefinitely.
Okay, okay.
You know, tell your friends, neighbors. So I don't, I haven't heard anything like that. If you don't, and I don't think that's gonna be an issue, really, in our town.
But the stuffed animals in my house?
Yeah, I mean, the things you can't bring to certain places and so.
I know.
We don't have a lot of time.
Okay. All right. Well, we just want to leave you. Here's a list of the items you can donate and a little brochure. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I think it's totally wrong.
So what's the next step?
Well, so I have a question for you.
Sure.
I like this program, all the reasons that you described, it sounds really great. My question is, what, do we have any liability issues with this? Is there a contract that goes by? Is there something that, you know, having this bin on school property, there's any, you know, issues? Is that a question?
Well, I have to try to think where that's addressed. I know I saw that they own it.
They're vetted.
They assume the liability. But I haven't, I don't know that there's a contract, but maybe there is.
I'm not sure. We can ask Catherine. I'm in touch with her all the time by email. But they, let me think. They're, all the drivers are core rechecked. They're, everything's like vetted. I mean, they're, you know, and they've been established for what, 11 years in 90 school districts? And I mean, I, you know, I haven't heard of any problems with that, but I think we can specify that.
Yeah, they must have some.
I'm sure they have. Initial paperwork you need to fill out and all that.
Can you just let us know what you find about that?
Yes. Okay. And what's the best way to do that?
You can write to David again.
Okay.
He loves it now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, ladies. That's wonderful. You're so excited. Yay, I can't wait to clean up my closet.
I know. Be good at time for winter.
No problem.
All right. So I'm being seen that a formal vote is not required?
I am. The formal vote is required. Do you think that ever happens?
No, it's not. I'm a favorer.
I think if you like the materials they send you about the liability, I think that's a perfect question, then I totally support it.
Yeah, it sounds like that we can make any adjustments if we feel that we need to. Does the administration have any concerns about it?
No, we can move it as we see fit. It's not in the eyesore or construction. Do you support the PTO?
You support it? Definitely support it. So, no. Okay, excellent. School committee goals. We drafted these in the summer meeting.
Yep.
Very few people attended. The three goals are to explore a restructuring, specifically the middle school model. And our goal with regard to that is for the administration to come up with two or more possible options this year and with the pilot, at least one of them in the school year that begins a year from now. And I think you have some, I don't know if you would agree on that.
No, no, we don't agree on that. But that's what the goal is. The goal is to explore the restructuring. Like, so I adopted that, go on restructuring upon my goal. It's a pre-admission school, right? Where we stand right now, so that exploration process is something we're going to delve into. And we'll see when we come up with ideas moving forward.
That's right. And just by context for television and print audience, if they're interested, the current enrollment beyond the fifth grade is pretty robust at 76. Going backwards, 4321 is its power, 64, 62, 62, 62. I don't recall what year it was. Same, 57. So with a string of 60-ish students in each grade, as they move into middle school, it's a legitimate question whether four sections of 15 each or 16 or their bouts is really the most effective way to do it. And therefore, maybe there's other ways to regigre the curriculum, maybe two grades at once on a particular subject or two sections.
We're gonna do some explorations.
But that's the context, that's the context that led us to. Second goal is communication, improving communication among the district constituents, so that will be certain students, parents, administration, teachers, other community members. And strategies for meeting this goal could include acting on the, acting upon the school advisory council survey, recommendation, increasing individual teacher communication with families, and broadening family and community engagement dialogue. And I think you were part of this study.
I think so, yes.
And certainly Christine has been very active in school committee communication, so any comments?
No, I, no, I, I think that I'd love to move forward to see if we can work on this. I'm happy to work with Linda on it.
You guys might work on something sort of specific. You don't have to come up with that now. And I will mention that we elevated a kind of a sleepy topic on the agenda, which was called communications and correspondence, which was just passing on a packet. And we decided to give Christine, particularly, really, everybody an opportunity to make communications news a piece of the agenda. And finally, collaborative district leadership, and that's, school committee is superintendent and I think also part of your goal, to interact more freely. It is an integral. So these are draft goals. Do we again discuss and vote to finalize them or do they just?
We have.
We do have a vote.
That was the one I think.
Right, that's not the.
Right.
Does this require a vote? Having a story, a vote?
I think the practice is we would vote in the next, if we want to vote in the next meeting. Okay.
Give us a chance to sort of.
So as long as you're all with us, people can discuss. Any other, any comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Nancy will put that up before we go to the next. Okay. Josh, your thing's a zipping one? Okay. Please do not.
This meeting is being recorded.
You can hear, he'll, he'll, he'll have. Superintendent, you're up.
So this year, I've created four fairly broad goals. The first one speaks to student development goal. And this is, it says, it's going to support our new middle school principal, Matt Mela, so we have a new principal, we're all married now, in his new supervisory role and ensure shared experiences and instructional practices and student achievement in the classroom among our instructional leadership team. So the leadership team is Dr. Seidel, Dr. Mela, Will Verblen, and myself. And this will be measured by a high level of consistency on format, breadth and depth of classroom observation, and document feedback. So we're gonna be focused on really kind of developing a shared view of classroom observation and feedback from teachers and making sure that that is consistent while at the same time, from my evaluation at the end of last year, making sure that we adhere 100% to the expectations of the education evaluation process, which we had a slight misstep on last year. So I'll make sure that we take care of that. So that's my first goal, identify student development because it speaks to a lot of feedback, teaching, and then.
I really like this school, especially with the new school principal coming in. It really gives an opportunity to establish that, you know, relationship and to give positive input and feedback in the observation process. And I think that it will lend itself to creating a feeling of support among the teachers and also maybe, you know, help the motivation enthusiasm and through that whole process. So that's great.
Our team works together. I think we have, we do have a great team. So when we put it together, we can make it work. So we are all on the same page and we go with the class and we'll be able to, we'll be back on in, making that much smoother for that.
I think it's really valuable for the teachers to have, you know, to have that interaction.
Absolutely. So now, the second goal is a, is to more effectively engage parents, families, and community members in the work of the district by providing opportunities to participate in conversations on district programming and contemporary education issues and by providing opportunities for the community to share feedback and perspectives on critical topics which the district is working on. So you may have recalled in our last, each meeting, we said we have some conversations and sometimes, "Well, what do the parents think? How do the parents feel?" So we identified that as a place where we could, we could probably use it. So that's one of the goals.
Great.
Kind of enhance that dialogue, create more opportunities for parents to have input into those important conversations that we're having in the district about what's being taught, how things are being taught, how our school is operating, which is all those interesting pieces that people do want to have some say in.
I think that was one of the things that we talked about, that maybe we could help with trying to figure out what's the best way to get, if it was, how the parents want us to engage each other, then how is the best way to engage them to get that feedback in them?
That would be very helpful. Is that now?
Put that in our.
The survey spoke about that more compared to teacher-parent communication.
Yeah, it wasn't really that. So it was about the effectiveness of the school communication. And one of the things that we came away from that with was the understanding that we needed to find some better avenues, more avenues for parents' community.
For more big sources.
For parents' community into the school to give their input. So that was one of the things that was left to deal, to work on.
So the third one is that, is a broad, it's about district improvement in our professional practice goal. So this is speaking during the 2018, 2019 school year. I will work to devote at least 75% of our administrative meeting time. That's, we have two types of administrative groups. We have our admin team, which is our instructional team, plus our business director, plus our facilities director, plus our tech person. So that group and our instructional leadership team to be focused on district improvement goals. And now, my use of appropriate strategies to actively engage our administrative team in developing and sharing ways to effectively implement the goals. So this is about ensuring that we, we're gonna see next in the, on a number of district improvement goals. And this goal speaks to all those goals, ensuring that we stay true to those goals and focus on those goals, but also me developing my skills and engaging my team in those conversations and those practices that help the program forward as they go.
So I admire that. And I think it's always good as a leader to keep the teams focused on those strategic objectives. But from a practical standpoint, I would be surprised if we could devote 75% of these meetings to that. I just know operationally how many little details, you know, come up all the time and have to be dealt with. I mean, you can always remind people in that, in the discussions about very mundane near-term problems, to keep in mind frame. I think that's good. But I do think 75% is pretty aspirational.
But I thought he was gonna work 152% time.
It's just the meeting.
I think it's, I think it's, it's a goal, we set a goal and we'll reassess it a little bit more. I mean, I could bring it down with the.
Well, I don't think, I don't, I guess my point may be that an merit standard is not really, I think you'll devote significant, you know. I think the point from my view, and I think about my own staffing needs, my own business, is to remind everyone constantly, you know, why are we here? Why are we really here? Yeah, we gotta make sure that, you know, the bathroom is not. But why are we really here? So that's always good to do, but yeah, every day you gotta learn.
All right. So I'll think about moving it in there. And then the last goal is, so the school committee has set a planning goal that is pretty broad and ambitious goal of exploring, exploring restructuring. So I put that as one of my goals, to work with the administrative team, faculty, staff, and parents, explore possible models of restructuring resources at the middle school level and refine processes in grades, curate the rating levels and the needs of students, while also addressing declining enrollments and staying within existing budgetary constraints. And I've kind of adopted the measurement that you put forward to some extent. My goal would be to identify a number of possible options by the end of 2018 with the intention of piloting a component. So you see my language is a little different. What are some of these options? Based on the conversation that we had in July, and some people have models in their head that they think are gonna play out. I'm not sure if those models will be effective, if that's gonna improve the education of students or if they are, whether that's feasible in year one or year two or how far down the line. But, so I'm not sure what we're gonna identify and identify, we're gonna work on that with the team. That's a goal, and I focus on that, and I'm trying to bring all the good together to identify.
Yeah, I think from my view, the most important initial step is simply to break out the four-by-four model and look at what, how else to accomplish, extend it out of mindset.
So that's the idea of exploring what the, so you have a model that you're, no, no, I don't have a model. I have a, I have a.
Simply trying to solve.
Right.
Deconstructing of what I consider to be rigid system and trying to figure out how to make it more flexible. Because we say, and that missed the beginning of this, but even the bottom is the issue. We say, okay, gee, you know, next year's fifth grade, starting the guy at, right, is gonna be 12 fewer than this year, and then it's just gonna go down, just maybe.
So that's the idea of exploring what the, so you have a model that you're.
No, no, I don't have a model, I have a, I have a.
Simply trying to solve.
Right, deconstructing what I consider to be rigid system. And try and figure out how to make it more flexible. Because we say, and that missed the beginning of this, but even well, that's the issue. We say, okay, gee, you know, next year's fifth grade, starting the guy at, right, is going to be 12 fewer than this year, and then it's just going to go down, just moving just maybe down. Because that winds us away from middle school, you know. If we're boxed into four-by-four, we can't, you know, we have to. So we just got to kind of say, all right, it's got to look different. And then maybe one of these years, you know, a bunch of people who've been 75 again. Well, what do you do then? Do you go back? Well, we kind of, at the small size we're at, I believe we need to be more, we need to be more flexible model.
In fairness, we are flexible. So then, no, but as I was saying, I think we understand the challenge.
Yeah.
And we're going to bring team together to look at it, think outside of the boxes that exist and see what possible, and explore other districts and other schools, private schools that have these size classes, and see what's, explore all of it.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly right. Also bring in input from middle school teachers, faculty. I think it's in how you frame the, you know, the situation or the, you know.
Opportunity?
Opportunity, right. Opportunity. So it's not, and how you frame it and present it, I think that's really going to impact, you know, the kind of input that you get.
Okay, that's excellent.
Thanks, Jim.
So you're going to, these are goals that you're going to work on, and you take a mini review. You make, you just take a mini review.
So now if we move on to the district goals, so if we talk about last year, the district goals are strategic objectives we identified on really a three-year. And they were based on the work that I did in my entry plan and then meeting with faculty and staff, and then bringing all that information together around these identifying goals. So the strategic objectives, the three strategic objectives remain the same. As many of the initiatives and the goals underneath those, although we've updated some of them because we accomplished aspects of the goal, we're moving forward in other components. If you want, we can go through all of those. So let's just, objective one is provide a rich, rigorous, and relevant curriculum. So if we take the first one here, increase student awareness and responsiveness to the challenges and benefits of digital citizenship. So last year, one of our goals was to develop our digital citizenship curriculum. And we worked with Nick and Maya, developed the curriculum. This summer, they worked with the five through eight grade level teams to establish where they were going to teach these and aligned it with the projects that we're working on. So this year, we're going through the implementation of that curriculum. So you can see, so we took aspects off and we added aspects. Next one down is deals with computer science, so we're still looking to improve and expand our computer science curriculum. Use technology to broaden student awareness of the world from a global perspective. We're still trying to use technology to help our students broaden their view of the world and connect them with other communities, whether it's for a dot week, which is taking place in the library this week. And you can see Maya would have a tribe of where our students are communicating with people across the country and across the globe, which is really interesting. Two connections we're making in the sixth grade or eighth grade with other, other classes across the country. We have a new art project that is coming into this year, we're going to have an art exchange with another country. So there's a lot taking place that's really helping our students see the world from a different perspective, not just the way that they find it in book or travel. We're still in the process of evaluating our current world language program to determine what that program is going to look like moving forward. So that committee is going to be up and running again this year. Our social and pattern curriculum teams worked last year, and they, they were working on identifying gaps and shortcomings in our curriculum, and we have identified a few that we'll be working on this year. And then the sixth one here is increased professional development opportunities designed to support integration of technology into all teaching and learning. We made great strides last year as we brought out new tech integration course on number one. And now we're just making sure that we can meet the demands and the needs that teachers have as we move forward. Where are we here? So then, there is one little change in number six. If you look down number three, we also, in conversations we had with one of our members here, we've also identified that there may be some video equipment becoming available. And the question was, would we be able to use that here in our school? And if so, who would use it and how often would you use? And in conversations, that's something we want to explore. If we were to get some cable television equipment in here, how would we use it? And the conversation with Nick is, we have some ways we would use it, but just as we discussed, if we bring it and we set it up, there are a lot of teachers who are using technology, probably taking advantage of this place. We want to explore that.
Thanks, Jim.
Number two is build the community of respect and inclusion and safe and healthy learning environment. And I'll be recording another situation perhaps I didn't deal with in the last couple days around that idea. But our goal remains the same, to improve school climate for our students with the ODS program. We're still looking to decrease student stress and anxiety through school-based initiatives as we also look to develop, we use the term perseverance a little more this year. So the idea, we also wanted to help our students develop some, I think term rigor. The ability to be disappointed or come up against challenges and not be successful. So we're going to continue with that.
And that actually came through in messages from two seventh-grade teachers with the, sort of the outline for the year. That, I mean, I can say, Ms. Perry in particular said, you know, mistakes are good. And I was thrilled to see that. So that's already come through.
And then the third one was create a school community that demonstrates cultural proficiency and equipment to meet the diversity of students and families. So we're going to continue with that. Increase professional development opportunities for faculty and staff to effectively address diversity in the classroom. Increase opportunities for teacher leadership and career growth. And improve student family satisfaction with the school dining experience. We had a bit of a conversation, which brother, we had a bit of a conversation right before the meeting, but that is something that we have a number of parents involved with, and we are soon working on that. And then our last one is ensuring equity and excellence in learning. So number one is increase the use and effectiveness of our tier system support. We'll focus on our tier two support. So we made some progress last year. Because we also have a special focus on our middle school and how Matt, that's one of Matt's goals moving forward, is helping to bring that tier destruction to our middle school. We have a, we have a more robust program in the elementary school already, so that can be a sage advisor, as we try to incorporate now, but we're moving that throughout history. Number two, ensure that all students have the opportunity to develop their social intellectual intelligence. Wise, wise, has a consistent part of their educational experience. So just, even you'll see tonight, I think, I'm not sure if Dan and Matt are going to filter our student handbook, but they've initially incorporated in that our social-emotional curriculum, which is a graphic in the handbook, which is very nice. And we're going to continue to develop that. We are looking to continue and increase professional development for educators with regard to working with our ALL students. Increase professional development opportunities in order to ensure effective implementation of our back-to-the-tier system of support. We're still focused on ensuring that our paraprofessionals have the training and professional development they need to be successful in the early. And then finally, we have explored participation in youth first behavior survey. As I said, the timeline was off from last year, we're looking at this year. But you may have also noticed in our goals, I've had a couple of conversations, that even before we jump into that, having some more conversation in the community, among the parents involved, what the benefits of participating in that are, and how many parents have the opportunity to give their input, feedback, have conversations around that topic.
Did we do the survey, though?
No, we didn't, because last year they, it's a two-year cycle, and they were already into the implementation. So we have a chance to get in, but we do want to engage our parents in those times. Survey will be created this year. Find two this year, then on the conducted.
So you, there's not a, there's not a standard for the IRDS, which is what's tackled.
So there's, there's a list of questions, but each consortium has the opportunity to add or take away or fine-tune some of the questions. So there is a group, at the Emerson Consortium, they get together for the year, contribute to the development of the surveys, and then.
Are you planning to engage parents in this?
Absolutely. That, that's part of, you see that one of our goals, because this, that would be even more engaging.
Do you hear Matt, would Matt wish to add anything to this section? Any comments?
Enrollment, so we have provided some enrollment numbers. So our current enrollment is 608. You have it by grade level. I also, I also printed out the, during our budget process last year. Yeah, yeah, so we had a swing. Came to my lane, let's just, we'll just move on, we'll discuss that. So this is last year's, during the budget season. We created our projections.
I just have a question on the district strategic objectives. Are we going to vote on those next time?
It's not for us to vote.
These are the strategic objectives designed by the administration.
Yeah, and I think last, we voted last, we may have voted last year to accept it, but at that time it was 2017, it was 2012.
Three-year.
It was a three-year.
Nancy should check it, but I don't believe.
So here are, here are the estimates that we made during budget season, projection. Here's just a quick tabulation. Cynthia, I don't know if you would like to pop in there?
Always.
Yeah, yeah. So the top is the sheet that was in the budget presentation last year. Bottom sheet is just the updated data. So as you can see, as you can see, the projections from last year, we gave a range where we were hoping to be. And we were pretty close. So we did see in the kindergarten, we did, as I mentioned in previous emails, we had a large influx, really in the very late spring, June, and then through the summertime, which raised us up to 57, which is slightly above what we projected.
Question.
It's amazing.
First grade, we were pretty close, 62, we were one below. Second grade, we were two, we were two, two above. Third grade, we were right inside the range. Fourth grade, we were slightly, estimated slightly low. Fifth grade, we were right inside the range. Sixth grade, we were right in the range. Seventh grade, we estimated one lower, and then eighth grade, we estimated one higher. So you can see, we gave a range between 588 and 610, and we came in at 608.
That's amazing.
So it worked out, we were on point. Now, I'm not one to say it was, it was, it was a development, the ways people came and went throughout this year, I'm glad we.
So what we, I mean, how we developed this was, if you go to the color chart, we did this stair-street chart. Reason for doing it is you can track the cohort by color. So if you see the K going 52, 53, that cohort of 52 adds one, adds one, adds four. And so the lower end of the range, when we did this, which was a year ago, we took the current enrollment of the year before, it's likely not to go lower than that. People who move in, unlikely people who move in. And so that was, that's what formed the bottom. And in one case, I guess we were lower than that. But basically, and then we said, oh gee, historically, how many kids move in to a particular, a particular age range? Just kind of looked at all this sort of data to put the upper end of the range. Well, if, you know, these kids move in as expected, we're out this way. So that's how we established it. So there was data that established it. Yeah, so as we see, children do move in periodically. But I think, you know, rolling back to the earlier discussion, and just kind of stepping back historically, when I moved in 14 years ago, I think or 840-ish. So we're 230 down, that's a lot. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, people love this town. And they love it when their kids are in high school, and they love it when their kids are in college, and they love it when they retire, and that's great. But it doesn't mean that there's a ton of people moving into school with children. And that's, you know, just, that's a good thing in a lot of ways, because we like a multi-generational town. We don't, in my mind, don't want to be a bedroom town. There are towns in the Commonwealth, great schools, where parents move in, when their kids get into school, and they move out at the summer the kid graduates in high school. I know that for a fact. We don't want to be that kind of town. So, all right, so we got to, we got to deal with our success, which is that there's not a lot of housing stock. And it's an expensive town for families with young children. And so we're not going to have tons and tons of people moving in like that. So we, I think we just, that's also a core of the restructuring initiative. I think we just have to understand what running an excellent, world-class school at, you know, private school size, let's say, really means. And I think that's, that's what we are, kind of, I won't say lead, I don't know enough about education, I'd say the leading is, but I certainly think we're at the forefront of that challenge, because, you know, we're a small school, and yet we're consistent.
Would a similar chart be helpful to look at when children go out of district?
What do you mean?
Meaning when we decide as a school that we can't provide the services that they need, that we send them to an out-of-district location?
So I thought, well, I thought you were going to ask a different question, because as we were talking about this, I was wondering about that point at which, in fourth grade, where sometimes families leave and they will go to a private.
Fin, or, yeah.
Yeah, because that's when those, those private starts. And I wonder if we have any.
Numbers on that too, yeah.
About that. And I also, I'd like to see the trend of that, you know, what that's been like over the years, and if it's, if it's increasing or decreasing. And if it is increasing, I think that it might be helpful for us to.
Increasing children.
Yeah, parents who choose to go to private school, I think if we could find information about what, you know, what's behind those choices. Sort of, you know, have conversations with parents who are making those choices to find out what's driving it for them. So that, maybe that could inform the school a little bit in.
How to retain.
Yeah. So that was one, that was one thing that I just keep up.
I would, I would say, I think that's a good idea, if one considers, for example, why do parents send their kids to go? I had a lot of those conversations, I think that's legitimate, but I want to be careful.
No, I know.
Our district placements that have to do with special education.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to look for some predictability there, when we should, well, like, is there a bubble on that? When does that typically happen?
I don't, I don't think, I wouldn't, SPED is its own little thing, which is monitored very closely. I do think though, you know, if, if, if parents are deciding, parents who move into this town, pay, you know, the high taxes, and are happy to stay here and yet decide to put their children in private school, when there's this excellent opportunity here, that's information we should remember. Some people, they can just, I went there, so I. But I mean, it's good to know, it would be good to know that, because, yeah, I think you offer, to me, you're a fantastic opportunity, not only excellent education, but you're going to school in the community you live, that's like a special thing.
The other thing is, you know, you mentioned being here 14 years, we're saying, and I, I do remember when there were 800 kids here. And I just wonder if it would be possible to have enrollment data in a chart that we could see the trend over time. And the other thing that, you know, I was thinking of as you were talking about, people moving into town, I think it would be worthwhile to, not, it's not our job, but I think, I see some avenues for this with the master plan processes coming up, to gather some information about what drives people's choices about moving here or not, especially people with school-aged children.
That's a really good question.
And I think that Pete mentioned that they have some, you know, they're going to, they're going to be collecting some of that information, working with real estate agents that live in town, you know, what kind of feedbacks do they get from people who live here? And I think that's really, that's also helpful.
So I do have a chart I can share with you with some enrollment data from past.
Like, going back for a.
Yeah, going back to, so we will look at 2011, because that would have been close to 2011, which was down to 2002. I can share that.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Flannery is patiently waiting, assumed to tell us all the great things he did this summer. His final summer as a director of facilities.
Yeah, so let's welcome David. Gave us his notice that he's retiring after 40, how many years? Gave us his notice that he's retiring after 40, how many years?
If you count part-time, it's 50 years.
If you want to get a close-up of Mr. Flannery.
Don't accept it.
But here, the team, so just let me preface it, so this summer, the team was shorthand, we had Danny retired, we had a number of people out on disability, surgeries, and still, when the doors opened up.
We had two wonderful high school students, and we also had one of the gals from the kitchen come and help us during the summer. It was great to have help, we never would have made it without them, really, it was that kind of, the summer was ghastly hot.
Yes.
In buildings where it wasn't air-conditioned. But we did a number of projects we were able to achieve in the, in the short time. The first thing we did was we moved a few classrooms, which, again, the high school help definitely was a wonderful, was a wonderful thing. We typically go into the buildings, particularly the science rooms in the elementary classrooms, and look for things that may not be appropriate to have in the room, or that we need to dispose of. Particularly the science rooms, which that sweep was done, and there were some things disposed of properly over the summer. We did very little interior painting, we didn't have much time for that. We worked on the skylights that had been leaking in the Robbins Faculty Room, which now has obviously been turned back to the Faculty Room, which is great. We had some exterior painting down at the wastewater treatment plant, and if you remember, that was a plant that was constructed in 2006, so. The biggest projects that we did this summer involved flooring, which was, the first project was the end of the Grant Corridor just past the Learning Center. And what we've been trying to do over the past few years is take areas that have the 1997 flooring, the white and gray, and try to carry what we've cut in the new, a little bit further, and push it along, all the way up to Bill Gale's door. And probably next time that corridor needs painted, it will get the complimentary paint that will match the floor. So we're trying to push that along. So if you look at the Robbins Building, and what we did two years ago in the, in the corridor, as you turn around the corner, we actually pushed that corridor floor tile, the 1997 we removed, and pushed it all the way to meet up with outside the engineering room. So now you only have the section of tile that's in the Grant Building outside the elementary art room and the foyer there, the elevator, that's the original 19, that's actually 1987, it's the original first floor. So that would be on our, our next replacement sort of flooring, and then that would tie that all together, and so we'll go. It did hold, hold very well. But the most important project we did, as you know, was the money we received through long-term caps for installing ceramic tile in the bathrooms in the Wilkins Building. And I'm particularly pleased with the way it came out. Again, the idea was that we would take old in-lead vinyl, which was probably on 17, 18 years old, beginning to fail, and remove it, and prepare the floor, and put the same ceramic tile that was used by the architect in the expansion project recently. The problem that we ran into was that the base tile was available in the two-by-two squares in that color, but the accent tiles were not. However, I found a box of one, and I worked with the tile person, and we, we made this little, you know, sort of pattern, laying them out to complement it. If you haven't been in there, sometimes stop and pop your hidden, the boys' or the girls' room, men's or ladies' was done. It's really very nice, but now we see the 1963 walls, the original glazed tile blocks, so we're working on what to do about that. We have put in a new ceiling a few years ago, and then we have the, the window, which is, it's got a piece of metal plate at the end, we're gonna restore that, I talked to Jim about it. We're gonna put a frosted window in there to let more light in the bathrooms. So the goal is really to modernize those facilities like the other students have, and that's sort of what we're doing in stages. So that was an excellent project. And then the Grant Learning Center, we, which is, as you know, if you've been in there, we have office petitions in there, so students can be, you know, tutored in little cubicles. And one of the things that we realized that was, if we were gonna replace the flooring, that we should use carpet tiles to improve the acoustics in there, or improve the reverberation around the room, so that there'd be less sound reverberation in there. And that came out very nicely. And then we did some tile work in the kitchen locker room. We also had a company come in that certified to inspect and test all the gym apparatus, the things, everything that hangs from the ceiling that students would use for safety, and replace any parts, you know, the basketball backstops and all that, we do that periodically, and that maintenance was done. The phys ed staff had asked me to remove the cargo net, which was done at that time. We also had the OT, PT room apparatus inspected and tested. The staff had asked, well, that was something that they wanted some assurances on, that everything was safe there, so that was done. We had some exterior glass replacements in Robbins and the corridor here for safety, and we had some roofing and flashing repairs down in the brick building. Now, there's still a list of repairs and work that we're, we're working on, which is the repair of the spiral slide down at the playground. There was some more tree work done within the last couple of weeks, but we have also scheduled a new technology to be used at the Carlisle Castle Playground on the existing trees that we have. And it involves sounding equipment, and the arborist can tell about the integrity, the structural integrity of the tree by the sounding through. And actually, he called me the other day and was asking about scheduling the work, and wanted to know if we wanted to invite our science class down to look at it, so I'm gonna see if we can coordinate that. It's Bartlett, which is the Fode, yeah, Matt Fode's trees went to Bartlett, and they're right in Billerica, and I've been working with them for a number of years, they do a phenomenal job. And it just gives us, well, we always have been working on, you know, the umbrella of anything that looks bad in the trees, you know, the integrity and the structure of the trees over the playground is so important, and this is something that gives us an extra level of insurance. So if some trees don't look like they should be there, we will certainly make arrangements to take those down. We did some door hardware repairs, and there, there are going to be some handicapped door operators installed later this year in the Wilkins, Corey, and Robbins. And this is because what we've discovered, for instance, between the dining room, the Wilkins Building and Spalding, here in Robbins, where we have fire doors, and we have, it's typically smaller, handicapped, or physically challenged students that have trouble opening the door themselves and getting, you know, getting either what they have through there. So we're gonna install a mechanical operator with a button on each side, so it just makes it easier for students to get through in those three locations. And then we are replacing the white backdrop on the stage curtain that got damaged last year, and we have to also add additional ground cover for safety at Carlisle Castle. The last thing I have to tell you about is a project that is pending and scheduled to be done sometime during the school year, which is a Green Communities Grant, which the town received. Actually, they, they worked on it last year, we worked with the Energy Task Force, and the award just came, and it includes $6,971 for HVAC improvements, and for sensors and controls in the Spalding Building. $87,745 in LED lighting with controls for the classrooms. $14,200 for de-stratification fans in the gym, and this is something that will increase the efficiency there by bringing the warm air all the way down and circulating it. That was my suggestion. So that's over $100,000 worth of grant that we are benefiting from. And I might say that in the last five years, we've done equal to that or more in the grants in the light, to include lighting, HVAC work, which included the exterior lighting, parking lot lights, exterior, all to LED. When this project is completed, we will have gotten rid of all the old technology lighting, and it'll be totally on LED, but smart lighting that is dimming sensitive to light, sunlight when it comes in, and brings the light level up, it will dim the lights down. And occupancy sensors that will allow the rooms, if there's nobody here for 30 minutes, the lights go out, and the minute you come in, they come back on. They have perfected it, the early versions were kind of funky, but they really have perfected that lighting. I'm excited about it because it continues to reduce our consumption, and I did a little quick analysis of over the last 10 years, when we began a number of projects, and these are the most recent, which have significant impact on our consumption. But in that 10-year period, this past fiscal year, we had the lowest consumption of electricity on this campus in a 10-year period. And that's about 30% less than 10 years ago, which is pretty good, and it can only get better with this project. So when you see those volunteers on the Energy Task Force, be sure to thank them, because it's a wonderful group. Bill Rizzo is my, if you know Bill, he is my liaison, and I work very closely with him.
I was gonna ask you, so is it a Massachusetts, the Green?
The Green Communities Grant is a Massachusetts program through the Department of Energy Resources.
Town, doesn't that mean we have to pay for the, for applying for this? It's our town's?
Energy Task Force, yeah, they're in the front of the town report, you'll see their names, but I work with Bill Rizzo, there are a number of other people, professionals, Basu, I know his first name, and there are a few other people on there that, Dan, his last name, I know their first names. And they were involved also in the, in the small solar project we did in 2012 on the roof of the Corey Building, there's a small solar array there. And I hope people know that if they want to go and see what that does, you can go on our website, and there's a link there, you can see, you can actually watch the actual, what's happening with kilowatt-hour.
Science teachers know that too?
I hope so, we've, we've put it out there, so I'll put it out again, because for our students, it's pretty neat, because you can, you can, it shows the squares, and it shows the percentage of, and the intensity of the sunlight, and the number of kilowatt-hours that we're saving. It turns the meter back. That, the, the credits that come back, there is a check that comes back to the town, because it was a town project, so that check comes, I think last year was $14,000. And it also reduces what we use, because it comes back, so it's, it's a good thing.
Danny, you can tell us all about it when you sleep on the roof in the spring.
On that side. So that's, that's pretty much a summary of what I have, and what we've been working on, and what we've got to accomplish by the end of the year. But the, the energy projects are something that certainly in my career here, I, even going back to the 70s, I've always enjoyed, because every dollar you can save, it's dollars you can use for education, it doesn't go out the window. You know, it's, that's exciting to me to be able to do that and have that kind of savings, so. Yeah, I'm sure it is.
David, two things in mind, which I know you're talking about, but just stating in public. One is that you're taking temperature data now, we're kind of not hot this week, but we're certain last week. We look forward to kind of accumulating, or reviewing, I should say, the fall data and last spring's data. And we have to go back to, once we have the data, that was one thing that the long-term caps wanted us to base our requests on data. But I think really where we are, when we get through all that, and you and Bill can guide us, what we really need, what we'd like to do, I think, is structure a proposal for a study by an expert to really figure out the HVAC. It's gonna be a big capital project, but we need to get headed with data and with an expert.
Right, the, the nice thing about this particular software that we have on Johnson Controls is that it tracks the temperature in each space every 15 minutes. So you can have, I mean.
Well, it's plenty of data.
Plenty of data. Right, well, we, Jim and I talked about it this week, and.
Since David's not gonna be with us after September, we figured we haven't come to every school. So we worked on what the October.
I think three slides, you know, one with, you know, a couple representative classrooms of what happens over a week and a bad week, but we certainly, we're gonna, we're tracking the, the end of April, all of May and June, and then we're tracking the last two weeks in August, September, and October. So it's like, you know, 10 weeks on each end.
Turning to the principles, I think Josh certainly has this information, but there's, there's studies on the impact, it's like temperature gradient, learning, so merging those two, I think, is kind of a, that's the story we want to tell. That's sort of part A, that's the background, but then we also, then we need to say, and this is what you and I was, okay, we identified that problem, we qualified the problem, what are we doing with it? We really have to look at the engineering balance.
Right, I think there are, if, in that study period that we're looking at, I think there are 88 school days, I was looking at that today, and I think, you know, there, there are probably, there's a good percentage of those days that are in that period, that are, go above the standard for, for comfort level in a, in a classroom.
And again, I think, you know, people identify that the problem, that's only the beginning.
But then the other pieces, right, yeah.
The other, the other piece of information, again, I know you're aware of, is that last year, long-term caps informed us that the historical, what we call the peanut butter approach, of taking a lump of $25,000 and simply blanket applying it to capital budgets. You know, it will now henceforth be considered part of the operating budget. So my request to you, as you're doing budgeting, is the more granular, I think that, we talked to Scott Trillo about this this week, but I think the threshold to propose a true capital project is $10,000. I'm not sure if that's the way. But I think, as you look at these little projects, the ones that actually you can quantify as a standalone project, the better, because yes, the $25,000's gonna go away, anyways, we have to pull this. So very good.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
We have started the process of budgeting, and we developed a motion calendar to first kind of calibrate it. And then, which we did this week more or less, including the meeting with the ThinkCom to get their reads put on board. And we've added Melinda as part of the budgeting. And I think we're at the stage where you're gonna now solicit the term in pushing to the next budget.
Yes, we're in the process, so we're working with Dan, Matt, and Will. Looking to see what are those needs that sit on our eyes that we need to think about as we build the budget.
With all the constraints and all the pressures that we face during that process. So that's, that's sort of the phase that we're in now, and that'll go for a couple of weeks. And then, then I think we circle back, and you'll present sort of preliminary budget to everybody.
Correct, so I think, once we have that data, we're gonna be with the team, I can work through it, we're gonna be with the team. And then we're gonna develop a first budget presentation we're gonna do at the end of September, or actually be in in October for our faculty, and then the general presentation. And after that, we'll take some feedback, meet with the school committee budget team again in October 4th, start feedback, build a budget presentation for the school committee, which will be.
For some experts, so the goal on that is, at the next meeting, we'll be able to actually present to the public a preliminary budget. And then, and we want to do that before we go to the finance committee. But of course, the finance committee is still willing to kind of tell us how we're doing. And then we will roll into the November school committee meeting to kind of try to find out, and maybe that we're, it's possible this calendar's a month ahead, so. My line will not come out until December, and so there's still gonna be some adjustment. We wanted to lay this out for Tom, and Melinda's partner is like this, Christine, for you, if there's anything you see there.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to think that, of ways that I can get closer to this. So I'm not really sure how that is, but I was thinking maybe I would meet with Sue after.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, because of open meeting.
Right.
We can't, only have two members in the process. I do want to say Nancy, Susan's not here, but we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, I don't really think we're using that. I think you're very in touch with Susan, and maybe ask her, I don't, I can't imagine anything else, you're, I can't imagine much, because we have a place over here for a meeting next Monday. But unless there's new information, I guess I'd rather not. Maybe it's for you to think about, Susan.
Yeah.
She might not.
Oh, we got a lot of them.
She's got a lot of them. Well, I recommend, but I think.
What we'll probably do is move it, we should move it, to, we have another one, the 24 or something.
That's a good idea.
Or we'll just do it on the 27th.
Okay.
Nice schedule though.
So now we have, we have our two principals who spend a good deal of the summer looking at handbook and revising the handbook. They're gonna talk to about the types of revisions they made. So it's just so we know that the school committee should look at the handbook and vote the handbook and pass the handbook and accept the handbook. So this is something we do need to.
We do.
Take care.
Okay.
So a little bit about the process and the rationale behind revising the handbook. It's something we want to do on an annual basis. We intend on doing it on an annual basis. Largely, a main vehicle for the revision process would be through our school advisory, our SAC, to gather parent feedback as well as teacher voice, student voice into the change. And then we propose the changes to you for your approval. We, Dennis and I sat down, really Will Verbitz, and we presented our recommended changes to Jim, and there was a little bit of back and forth, which we shared with you. We just today shared it with our school advisory council. They are reviewing certain aspects of it with a lens from a parent's perspective, a teacher's perspective. But what went into this was really a pretty exhaustive five-week, at least, period over the summer, which substantially benefited me as part of my entry plan. I got to really understand, you know, through a document analysis, what the old handbook entailed, and then looked and talked in a lot of conversations with, okay, does this reflect what we actually do? We also looked at a whole variety of other school handbooks and contacted other administrators. And we want to thank Wellesley Middle School especially.
Wellesley Public Schools.
Yeah. So Wellesley Public Schools very generously shared their format with us. And our intent behind this revision was to make it more user-friendly for parents, for students, consolidate some information, update some information that's out of date, also to make it more visual, visually appealing. I don't know if you had a chance to review it, but we inserted a lot of tables and graphs and charts.
We weren't, so we didn't.
Then we give a little link. Okay. So it is.
It's much shorter than the old one.
Yeah. We, we cut down from 80-some pages to about 54 pages. There's some things in there, notably like Section 5, Section 6, it has some school policy that we're not gonna change for obvious reasons, and they need to be in there. What we did was we looked at the old handbook thematically and we thought to ourselves, what are the categories that a parent would want to know about? So we boiled it down to communication, typical operations of the school, like what a school day looks like. We involved the whole child, getting at the social, emotional, the academic needs of the children. Some school rules needs to be in a handbook, and that is our student code of conduct here. So it's the six main categories. And then finally assorted district policies and legal responsibilities. We've linked to a lot of existing documents that are on the web already, so that, it has a lot of hyperlinks in there, which allowed us to seriously consolidate a lot of information and update.
You don't have to repeat it because it's.
It's out there.
Yeah.
So it's on our website right now. On the very first page, it has a little, like, kind of disclaimer on it, pending school committee approval. There also is an acknowledgement form for parents and students to sign and to return. And because this is not officially approved, we also included last year's handbook. It's all out on the web right now, on our, linked to our website.
How long has it been out?
Since the start of school.
Initial feedback from the community?
Not yet. So we just gave it to SAC today. So one of the reasons that we looked to change it was because parents, talking in the last couple of years, other than having that sheet that said, oh yes, I went over this with my child, they would never open the document again. And so we really wanted to create a document that, that parents would go back to as maybe their starting point, and that's why we put so many links into it. So you might start on the nurse's page, but then you can link right to their page with all other information. So there was a lot of work put into tables. So here's an example of preschool, elementary and middle school starting times, but for absences and tardies, what do you do? For dismissals, what do you do? For messages, what do you do? All on one page versus, it used to be all narrative, and then you had to try to find each one. So we really tried to make it easier to use and more visually pleasing, so that information kind of stood out. Another thing we added that wasn't in here before was faculty staff directory. So if you're in the back and it says you need to see the registrar and you don't know who that is, you now can come to this page to find who it is. Or I might know the teacher's first name but not the last name. So now you have a place that the whole faculty is in, your handbook, which then will lead you to go to the website if needed.
So those aren't, those aren't links?
Those aren't links. Another thing that we like to, that we put in as a table, is if your child comes from by bus, by walking, bike or drop-off. So these are all the different things that you can have in one place, so you can see how kids get to school. Matt created drop-off, which is something that we're working on presently, and we have a parent group that Jim has put together to meet with. So just talking about what are the issues that we have with drop-off, because there are, you know, some mistakes that are made when kids get out on the left side versus the right side, or they pull in and stop and watch their child walk into school, or, you know, other things. So we're trying to look at how we can improve that for parents.
We need to find the committee to develop.
Page 19.
That's all.
Oh, sorry. Jim had referred to this chart. This is all our social, emotional programs from K all the way to grade eight, and things that we've put in place. So that's also already there. And then a new document. So middle school last year worked on a curriculum overview. So now that's in the document. Elementary is working on theirs this year. So next year, you will have a curriculum overview in your handbook from K through grade eight, all in the same format. So the middle school created the format, elementary's gonna follow the format and just put in art pieces. So that's up now, and that's new this year. And then, I'm just sorry that, I'm just gonna skip to 31. Sorry, I don't want to take too much time. So here's a document that, for instance, if you look down for, you have a question about discipline. So it could be in the classroom, the lunchroom, playground, first person you go to is teacher or the principal. And then if you need to go to the next, then it's principal or superintendent. Same thing with counseling. If a student has issues, then you're gonna go to the school psychologist. If you need to go, then it's the principal or the director of people's services. So again, we feel that charts work much better than the narrative. And so I think we've got a good, it's a drastic change from what we had, but we're also looking for the members of the SAC committee to come back and continue to help us revise this. So it might look like this, this year, but then in the summer, every year, we're gonna go back. We purposely made documents that we have to go back and change every year, because this is gonna be something that we do to keep improving what we have. And there's two quick things. So we also have, oh, did I just go back? Yes. So OVAES, our bullying prevention four rules are in here. And then, true to a lot of the work that you're doing, Matt created a page that has every policy we have that's a link. So it has the name of it, you can hit it and it goes right to the link that's on the website of the policy. So you don't have to scroll, you don't have to, you know, look for it. It's right there, all of them, that we have in the handbook.
So who will maintain that piece? Because periodically we review and revise the policies and then.
Right. So that, that would be our webmaster or us as we go through. So if there's something you change, then we would automatically change the link. But this is, this is the link to your document. So you could actually change the document.
Yeah.
And the link would stay the same.
Nancy changes those documents.
Yeah, they should put the new document.
Yeah.
Correct.
This link's directly to the PDF.
So that was just a highlight of the few of the things, because we did move a lot of things to more visual. And we did go, what, we go down from 80-something to 54 pages.
Exactly.
But linking.
Can I have a question? Because sometimes I notice, you know, as things change and stuff happens, that links get broken. And I just wonder if, when you click a link and it's, you know, this isn't here anymore or is not, is there a way to, this is a funny question for the IT guy, to put a feedback mechanism, or somebody clicked it and it sends, you know, a message to say, oh, that doesn't mean.
I don't know the answer to that. It's a free question.
So if it, if it doesn't work, it's kind of like an alarm goes off, a warning thing telling us.
It says, okay, this broken link or whatever has to be.
This is a software program, this website, so the only limitation, I think, would be the software on the website. But I'm sure Nick can find it if it's there.
Yeah. Absolutely. Any questions?
My question is, is this a PDF?
This, yeah, so very interesting. The original document we created in is PowerPoint. So we then converted it out of PowerPoint into a PDF, which then.
Which is what you have on your website.
So your answer is yes, it's, it is a PDF, that's the published version, but we want to edit and make changes, like this is one slide here.
Right.
So the nice thing is we can drag slides around and reorder them and restructure them. The challenging part is, when we do that, we have to go back and edit every single slide.
Right.
So there is, it's a labor intensive on the front end, and I guess on the editing. So what to do, we have to do.
Well, the reason I ask though is, is it searchable? So if I search on the school website, I'm not gonna get to this because I would have to search the PDF.
Good question.
Because that, that's why I pushed to have the policies taken off of PDFs and put on the website. And I know that's been an adjustment.
So that would actually just tax.
But are you talking about if you're, if you're searching for this?
Yeah.
Well, eventually this should, this will be on our front page.
Student handbook.
But I think, but I mean, at the next level, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's awesome.
The next level, like Christine is moving towards is, I don't really think about the handbook, I want to know about the tardy. I don't even.
I don't know where to get.
I don't even think through that it's the handbook. I just say, I want to get on the website, I want to type the tardy, and boop.
Oh, I see. Keywords.
So as a consumer of information, you want to find out about tardies.
Right. I think the next layer really is to actually disassemble it as a PDF and just have natural word searches for things.
And this, and this website is not happy to do that.
No. But the other thing that I would like to point is, we're trying to get people to use this document. So if you come into this document and you go to the key, I mean, it's gonna be pretty fine, easy for you to find tardies and absences. Like, this is where we want parents to go first to start, and then it takes them links to other places.
Yeah, that's right.
What about, I'm just, because I recognize this problem. On the homepage of our website, we have a search button, and you can put any word in there. What if we put something under it that says, "Search the handbook"? Can we do that?
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
You know, we can, we can.
Yeah, we can look at that.
That's a question for.
For Nick, for Scott.
Or it may even be a sentence under the search that says, "If you're searching for something in the student handbook, go to the student handbook, open the PDF and, you know."
Just to explain the problem to the IT guys, it's awesome, you guys.
That's a great start.
Thank you so much.
So we're going to, thank you. Everybody's got a hand to review it.
Where is it here? On the website? You said it's here?
It's under. It's actually, if you go in the back to school information for parents on the front page of our website.
Yep.
Might have to come around.
No, that's fine.
And then scroll down.
I do know.
And you scroll down, it says handbook, and then.
Yeah, 18.
Yep. And then it has the other one.
Pending school, okay, great.
Yep, so that's great.
Where is that?
I think we're.
Yeah, there is.
So I'm on the back to school, go to the, it's the four parents.
Is that where you find it?
Yeah, and it's.
That's where we're gonna find it until approved.
So, you know, it's so nice now, I can put it on the.
Could you put in, could you put a splash?
It's a predictable thing to go.
You've got menu, calendar, directory, community, like, can you actually elevate it to up here?
We may, we may have to replace one of those. That might be one of the.
You have to put it right there, you know?
But if you do want to look in the handbook, it is, it, there's a link in the email that Nancy sent out.
You guys, this is amazing. Thank you so much.
It's even more amazing when you look at the old handbook.
Yeah. It's amazing. It feels grown up.
Great, you guys.
Thank you so much. I love all the charts.
All right. Husky Home.
So the last piece here is the Husky Home Learning. So as you can all remember, last year, we went to school June 27th.
Yeah.
And at that time, there were, we heard that many districts were getting out, even the districts that had one day's off from school were getting out earlier than we were. And we discussed the alternative structured learning program that the state had presented. And we, although we didn't, we didn't latch on to that last year, after the nine cancellations, we decided this year we could do some investigation, see if we could develop, develop a program that we could work on, have in place, so that if we needed to use it this year, we could use this.
Cool.
So at the end of, at the end of the summer, we had a group of faculty get together to work on this, developing a program. Luckily, we'd also have neighboring districts who had been working on this program throughout the year, so we have to thank Western Public Schools and North Millsex Regional Public Schools, because a lot of what we did initially incorporated into our draft, we borrowed from the network. Let's see, I'll take a moment. Jump up here. So we had the, we had our own faculty get together and develop a program. And what the program is designed to do is to design, to give us the opportunity, which one did you use, Dan? Did you use the HD?
Yeah.
I used this one. The program is designed to give us the opportunity that if we do have a school cancellation, that we can share some assignments, some work, some projects with our students pre-K through 8, so that they can do work at home, and we can use that instructional time to count as a day in the year, so we don't have to add a day on at the end of the year. So we had our team get together, develop the program. Then after, we had the team who laid the foundation to the Husky Home Days, the Husky Home Day Learning Program. We have to thank Matt Mailer for the name, he's very creative in there. But we also invited some parents. We thought it was important to get parents' perspective. We had our first meeting with parents today. Now we're looking to schedule our, that's another data. We're looking to schedule our first joint meeting of faculty, staff and parents for the weeks to come, so that we can finalize the program. But what the, the idea is, is we present our rationale, is that the educational opportunities that students have at the end of June aren't quite, we all know that they're not as valuable as the days that we miss during the year. We also know that last year, our attendance rate decreased considerably by about 10% each day. So if two years ago, we had 6% of our students absent on the last couple of days of school, last year, we had about 16% of our students absent the last couple of days of school. So the plan is that we are gonna have, hopefully gonna have a program where teachers will be given, have assignments prepared, elementary school, they may have assignments prepared in advance. Middle schools, we're trying to encourage it to be a program, assignments that are Middle schools, we're trying to encourage it to be a program, assignments that are more relevant to what's taking place in that class, or they might be called upon to modify or develop their assignments the day before or as the snow days occur. But so we can communicate those assignments home to students, and then students can spend time working on that snow day, so that hopefully, we want to encourage them to do the work on the snow day, so that when they return to school the next day, the instruction just continues. It's fluid, it's, everything's connected. So that's the, that's the hope. But knowing that if we do have a plan, and these are all the conversations we had as parents and as faculties, we have to understand that if it is a day when power is down, or if you're connected and you need your device and your internet is down, that we have these assurances in place that we decided you would have a week to try and assignments, you can bring that back into school at the end of the week. And if there are extenuating circumstances, we work from there. A lot of the conversation that we had with the teachers and with the parents is, when would we use this? Initially, we thought, well, we want to limit the number of snow days we have at the end of the year. So maybe we might set a benchmark, if we got to three snow days, we'd use it for any subsequent days. But then we thought, well, on some of those days, like last year, we had it forewarned. We knew the night before that we could call, so we could get information out, and people would have a chance to get the packets ready, or download the information they need from online, or print it up at home, or whatever they need to do in place. Then we also had the conversation that if we are going to invest the time and the energy that we have invested in this, and we want to publicize it to parents and everything in place, and this was going to be a pilot here, then maybe we should, the first snow day of this year, we'll just implement. And then it gives us a chance to do it, go get feedback from the teachers, feedback from the parents, see how it works, see how we want to fine tune it as we move forward. So that was the pieces we have in place. That's a, I think that's what we latched on to. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it the first day, get the feedback, move forward. And then in our conversation table, which we haven't really brought the teachers and the parents, say that it was a nice talk, well, maybe we would front load those days. Maybe the first few days, we might have the Husky Home Days, and then if we have subsequent days, you know, the fourth, the fifth day, then we would just have snow days. Because there is still that feeling, at least in the parent sector, that some snow days should just be snow days, like, there's just the snow day.
We have something like five built in to it?
Yeah, we have five, and we even use the term built in, and we had a conversation on that. We have, we identify the first last day of school, and then we identify a possible second last day of school, but really, it's a continuum, and it could go out. As we did last year, we went well past that second last day of school.
Last year, in the initial, we go around to this, Desti kind of put on her condition. Are we more or less on the honor system in terms of what we consider the threshold of participation to the narrative?
We are, so we are looking, we, Desti did set a criteria of how many students needed to participate in this. And we still can't find the information, but we think it was about 80%. And that would be our intention, would be at least 80%. We would expect that really every student would participate in this.
And you mean by that, you mean turning in that assignment?
Yes.
Whether they did actually on the snow day?
Correct. It's the completion of the assignment. And really, the program that we have, once it is finalized, we'll probably bring this in October, once we've had a chance to vet it throughout parties. Once the school committee endorses it, that's the oversight. So it doesn't, the state really isn't going to intervene, it just accepts the school committee's opinion. So this is, what this is, is a Google site that the committee created. And this site would be, right now it's just accessible as, as it is here internally. Yeah, we don't want to lose that. So this would be, this is an internal document right now, but this would be available to parents once it's released. And the hope is, it explains why we have the Husky Home Learning. Gives an overview of the program itself. And then most informative, it has a list of frequently asked questions. So it walks through from what the teachers do on a Husky Home Day, how will students know what to work on during the Husky Home Day? Do all school students have the same lesson? So the idea would be, it's going to vary for elementary and middle school, but if you're a middle school student and you're in seventh grade, whichever classes you miss on that snow day, those teachers will have assignments for you to work. And if you're in elementary school, there'll be more of a focus on literacy and the math skills, but there still might be art lessons and whatever specials we have, they're awesome. They're also, it's pretty comprehensive, because we are saying this is going to be one of our 185 workdays, so that everybody has responsibilities. So we also have a sheet that says, "School personnel, roles and responsibilities for everyone, classroom teachers, special education, related service providers, guidance councils, nurse, paraprofessionals." Everyone has responsibilities on that day, and then into the days that follow. Because sometimes if you're an occupational therapist, you may have some things that you need to work on on the snow day, but you also might be providing services to students who missed their services on that day before or after school. So you still have responsibilities outside of your traditional school day.
Did you find other districts had this type of delineation of roles?
Yeah, so as I said initially, we, we looked at other districts, and it seems like there was one template that every district that created these programs utilized, and they were very similar. So they all had the roles and responsibilities, they all used the frequently asked questions. We added a few of our own, but the template is shared among these districts. And actually, today I received an email from another superintendent doing some research, asking what people, if anyone was doing this, I explained our program, what we had, what we had in place, then asked, whatever information you gathered, just if you could share that back with us, it would be delighted to see that, to get a sense. But I get the feeling that a number of districts utilized it last year, and more districts are going to be prepared to.
Sure. So Jim, what I'm getting at what you're saying is that on a given, I mean, generally, we have some, and by some, 12 to maybe 24 hours advanced snow is that a storm's coming. So there's a good chance that it will be. So in that situation, the teacher will, I presume, take his or her sort of anticipated curriculum for the day coming up, and post some assignments that relate to that, the appropriate spot.
On this, so actually, this site is designed to hold all of those.
Right, but I mean, the point is, you can't do that like now for the, you just do it like way before the day, that might be the snow day based on what.
So it may be, the way the conversation's, elementary may be a little different, because their skills and the work they may do will apply.
Across the grade, yeah.
Right, but in the middle school, the expectation is, yeah, it would be something that is more immediate, connected to tomorrow, which also.
Sort of like school agenda.
Yeah, it's a way to communicate, but the lesson, the, what we're going to ask students to do would be connected to whatever unit they're working on at the moment. So we don't want them to take an assignment in that blizzard bag and leave it at the house and then open it up.
It's not a physical thing. I mean, they do have to log in together, or they could log in the night before if they're worried about losing power.
So, yeah, so once we post it, they can log in at any time. So teachers may be able to post it the night before, and students can access it, download it to their device, or print it up, or just know what it is so they can work on it. The conversation with, maybe in first grade, first grade may have something more traditional that they bring home on that snow day, they have the materials.
You know, it just makes sense to me. Last year, we had so many days like that, teachers didn't want to lose their momentum. And I'm talking about in middle school, we saw that kids were spending some of that time on those snow days, working on assignments to keep, you know, keep the momentum, momentum going. I think it was frustrating for teachers, they were losing some continuity with all those snow days. So we already have to have it set up, you know, to have iPads, and so I think, you know, this makes a lot of sense. And just, you know, developing a plan for elementary is a little more flexible.
So that's, that's the plan. We're engaging, as I said, engaging with parents today. We're having, not next week, but the week after, we're going to have a meeting of a whole, right? This is called the Parents and the Factories Get Together, so we can just kind of eyeing out anything we want to do and prepare our presentation. But I should be able to share that site with you, so you can.
We'd like to look at that. The other question, maybe it's just kind of that, I don't know, to check with you from what you said. So the teachers have the job, so to speak, of preparing a lesson plan, and then grading or reviewing with the students, who does that happen? As you mentioned, paraprofessionals, OT, studio, not the sort of, but paraprofessionals, OT specialists that rely on personal contact probably have the day off, but will see increased workload in the non-snow days and will be able to follow it. Does it catch you? Does that kind of?
Yeah, so what you said, they have the day off, there are things that they can.
They have things they can.
They would be called on in subsequent days.
An OT specialist is not going to do OT that day.
No, not going to deliver services, but.
But she will do that service now. And is that, and that's something you've got to look with the CTA.
Yeah, so the CTA, so Lynda's taken this and talked with her MTA person. So we're not the first district to do that. It may mean that we have a memory of understanding going along.
The quick draw is that also you're not tacking, also for the teachers, you're not tacking on.
Correct.
June 27th, right?
Right, right.
So there's a benefit to doing that.
Better place to put the work. So is there a threshold that we will measure? Like, will you measure how many kids participate so that if we only get 75%, the day doesn't count?
We are.
But are you going to say, if it doesn't meet the threshold, sorry, kids didn't count?
No, we're going to work to.
So the idea is that teachers will work to make that happen, because this is, it is going to, like, this will, the assignment is part of their, it's more appropriate for the factory to say, it's partly a grade. This is work, and it's going to be graded, and you need to get this.
Five angels, yeah, well, it'd be easier to get the mindset of the middle school, because if that's where you're moving is.
Elementary will totally do this.
Okay.
I mean, really, I don't think that you're going to have a issue with that.
No, I just worry about the parent who says, you know, how do I do all this?
Well, that's why they get time to work on it, you know, it's not like, they, they may have to do it on Sunday, they just want to drink hot chocolate and play in the snow.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good.
But I think it's magic. As a parent myself, I might like to have a kid have a little something to do after all that, just for quiet.
And as we look at other, other programs, it's not as if we're requiring our kindergarten students to go home and work two and a half hours.
Have a designated desk in your living room.
They'll have honey and hot chocolate. That's great.
Great, great.
If this teacher's sense of bringing, you know, making any mention of this on Parents Night, is that, is that appropriate place until you think you're ready to talk about it?
I mean, if there was off conversations around it, that's fine, like, we're engaging parents. So it's not like, it's not a secret, but I think we just wait until it's approved.
I know, it's just such a good opportunity.
Because you have them in your, in your room.
Because you have everybody right there and.
You guys are each giving out.
Right. And you can just mention that it's got works or whatever, it's a good idea.
It's amazing. Thank you, guys.
Nancy, you want to walk us through this change in our.
What do we do?
We are changing the warrants, reviewing the.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Because of the commitments now, right, we need another person to review the signing of the warrants. Because Christine was no longer able to do that, we need to, to meet and have a discussion, and then we may have the right to vote and have this happen at this meeting. So who can move forward? The design making move forward with signing the warrants. So I think that's the.
Okay, so we'll think about it. Okay, communications. So as I mentioned earlier, we're elevating the Section 5 Communications modules. We gave it a little more warrants in our overall agenda. So Christine, you've got something you want to talk about?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of go over some of the things that have we put into place. One is the PEG access that we see happening here. Thank you, Ariana, for recording. And then, I'm going to work, there's a, there's a big change over at CCTV in terms of the town is taking over the station, so it may be a little sketchy.
Is that a very bad for us?
I don't think it's one or the other. But it, there may be, because there's changing administration over there, that may have some glitches, but I'm working with them to say, you know, we've booked the camera for all of our meeting dates, and I'm just working with them to find out the broadcast dates and how we're going to get that information out. So that's good. We did send out a welcome email from the school committee the first week of school, which I thought was a good idea. Then I've given Nancy a boilerplate of a message for each of the issues of the buzz that goes out. And really, the same messages that we're putting on Facebook, which is just sort of things that people who don't have us in the forefront of their mind are going to pick up a little bit of information about the school committee, what we do. And one of the things, I, I said, we're getting about 30 click-throughs every time we get a message that we put up on Facebook, which is really great. There are 70 people following our page.
This is the school committee page?
Yep.
The road school committee page that we found.
That's not, that wasn't a page, that was a search result. And so there are things like the welcome back email, message, a list of the meeting dates, how to suggest an agenda item, open meeting law, how to find the approved minutes, so just little orientation things. So again, I would say maybe one or two messages a month on Facebook, just to keep the presence there.
That's what you're doing?
Yep, and the nice thing is, I can do these five months in advance, so I've already booked everything through the end of December. So it's not a lot of work. But Nancy has got the boilerplate messages for each month of the buzz, and so unless we want to change it.
Now, is that like a little thing that goes in the buzz from the school committee?
Yep.
The school committee needs.
And it's the same.
Do you have that this month?
I don't know if, I don't know if you had it before the first buzz went out. I don't know, Nancy. But, but the nice thing is, is that she doesn't have to wait for us to give her a message. She's got them, but if we want to say, oh, you know, in January, let's change out for this message. They're just little info messages. They're short and sweet, because we don't want to make the buzz longer than it needs to be, but just to wait for us to be present in their day. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so the, the regional school committee does coffee each semester. And I realized that it would take some orientation, and we may only get two or three people, but I thought it would be a really good idea if we could be present at a couple of coffees that we could do throughout, you know, maybe one in the fall and one in the spring, just to let people see what does Melinda Gambino look like, you know, and have a chance to talk to her. So I'd like to schedule those. I don't think we can make them mandatory for all of us. With open meeting law, we probably can't, but maybe if two of us could take the fall and two of us could take the spring, then we could have a little bit of an opportunity for people to meet us.
Let me ask Carrie, you have a meeting every month, you have a steady group of participants, and we attend that. What's your feeling from the parent? Do you think that they would want a separate school committee coffee? Or is it more like covering the overall?
So maybe what we do is we say that.
On a given.
That we're going to be at that meeting.
Well, we, yeah, well, right.
Like the administrators, huh?
Yeah, but that's, that meeting is specifically for PTO business, it's kind of a.
Well, no, Jim and Dennett and they all report out.
It's not, no, it's not.
But it's their, it's their.
It's their meeting, but we go to inform people of what's going on, right? So I've always used it as an opportunity to tell you guys what's going on.
I mean, so here's an idea, because it occurred to me at the newcomers coffee. You know, we had school committee members there, and it was well attended.
That wasn't well attended, I thought for.
Yeah. Do you know how many were equal that I wanted to speak about, so it was.
You did.
And you did a great job, and I would say.
Did you guys speak?
We did not.
Maybe there were 15 people newcomers, and there were a few people.
It's all right, no.
I think maybe, even if we just more publicity up, like, we did newcomers coffee, and we did say, come meet Matt Mailer, because he was new.
That was a draw, I wonder you know.
So at the same time, which is, we don't do that either for the meetings, like, I don't say.
Right, that's a good idea.
And I think maybe we should add that, you know, the administration comes and says what's going on this month, and the school committee, which we never really do, so we can ask.
Your regular attendees know that.
They know, right, like the.
And the synergy there is that the school committee and the PTO want people to come, so we're helping each other.
Right. Well, so that's one idea that I had, was, you know, why not have it be a joint coffee of the PTO, the school committee administration, have it be a forum where, you know, you get more banked, or what so to speak, you get more exposure to those, you know, groups, school groups. And you could even, if things were going on at a certain time, like the CEF was working on something, they would like.
Bring them in, yeah.
And, you know, have, not have it necessarily during your meeting, but maybe make it like an informal half an hour before a meeting or something.
Right.
And then people could, you could drop, maybe drop people, more people to stay and find out. You know, it's just, you know, we have, if we say school committee coffee, maybe why not really?
Create this.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm all for saying, I'm all for doing it to let people know that we are reaching out to them, I, you know.
Well, what do you think about trying something joint like that, and?
I actually don't think we need it now. I think the, what we should be doing is we should be, because you go to every school.
I don't make them all, I didn't make the last one, but I tried to, I tried to.
But we, but we could, we could each, we could try to schedule that, so there's someone there every meeting. It's only once a month.
And how would you, yeah, how would you feel about making a little, like, I mean, your meetings don't normally have, you're, you're about business, you know, for the most part, right?
We always leave the beginning, like, we, that's, we leave the beginning open, Jim and Dennett and Matt can come, say what they want, and then go, because they have business to attend to. And David, right, last year, he came, and so.
Yes.
We do see that. The idea I had was just have a, kind of like, the, you know, little informal thing that was happening before school committee meetings in the evenings, last year, 6:30 to 7:00. You know, maybe try it at in the morning, like, have a short period of time, informal for coffee and conversation, and all of us are there.
But we, I mean, we could propose, let me propose this, that perhaps that you're next, I will, I do generally try to come, I just couldn't make it. So we're always there as part of the standing thing, but if you want to ask your committee, or it's not a committee, but whoever shows up, but if you want to ask. or it's not my committee, but whoever shows up, but, if you want to ask for whether they like that, then I agree, once, once a semester, so maybe November, it's a November meeting, sometime in the spring, or the December meeting, like the holiday thing.
To create action.
Then we could, you know, we could start at eight-thirty or something, and people could come.
And...
Well, let me just, normally, before I start, we can, we can support catering over for coffee or any stuff, we can support that through cafeteria.
No catering? But they have some coffee they bring from no drinks, so...
Well, we could do that. Okay, so we can do that, we can do that.
You don't have to order your meetings, do you?
Well, just, you know, have a coffee. Yeah, we have to draw a couple today, yeah?
Yeah, definitely have to have some.
Could be a problem.
Yeah, probably.
When you, when the school committees are, well, have something, make it a special occasion.
But I think, you know, rather than just, I think that needs to be marketed so as to the, to the whole school community, so...
That's right. Because we go out there in our meeting, why don't you...
We can just make, you know, send out a blurb, we're going to do that beforehand, say, hey, this is...
But I would, you know, I think it's good, I would, I would target the meeting in the summer, because it's like a holiday thing. We could have, you know, people's treats and...
It's great.
And I, and, you know, that's the other question about, um, if more than two school committee members attend, we would have to...
You can celebrate.
No.
No, you can't, no. Because, because Concord is now doing a cookout.
Well, let's ask Cynthia.
Yes.
So in that situation, do you, the school committee members all come to this coffee and they're sitting on chat?
You could post it if you want to, or if you're just there to listen, you...
Well, they're going to ask a question.
Yeah, that's true. She would post it.
Just post it.
Yeah, that's what I would say, too. You're, you're to get, gather input, and then, you know, you could even become...
Actually, that's great, because you want to be with the company.
Yes, yeah. That's great.
So we'll, we'll wait for your feedback on that, if that's what we're looking for. Okay.
So that's, that's great.
Is that a done deal? Have the committee set up?
Oh, she's going to talk to the PTO.
They're always invited, so...
We're always invited, but if we come, if we come as more than just meets...
She always said about, well, she'll be in for a Friday at Davis. Yeah.
Thank you.
Christine, before you move on, I just learned to, I noticed this, I got this from a high school today, but there was, there are school committee coffees in forums over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Wow.
Um, so I don't know, like, one of them is at Carlisle-Ferns Country Store.
They have this many.
Um, they have so many schools.
So, and what, so what is that? September is the morning of Monday morning, it's going to be at Ferns Country Store, and then Carlisle Public School Community Room, Wednesday, September twenty-sixth. My guess is that this is to provide information to the public regarding the special town meeting, two warrant articles from the regional school.
Um, I think they're actually just, I don't, I, I didn't get the sense that it was about that, but certainly covered that, yeah.
It's not, yeah, it's not, it's not specifically stating that, but, yeah. Um, but that, you know, definitely, considering that there's six of them...
So you're on, you're going to these?
Uh, I'm going to the Carlisle ones, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Melinda.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I thought, I thought since we were trying to enhance the communication piece, we would just mention some of that communication that's come out of our office over the... So, um, one of the things is that we have, we sent in by Dr. Parents, want to share that, we sent in by Dr. Parents, we got in the Husky Home Learning Day, and we invited parents, and all the parents responded, were invited to communicate this, and that was great. We also sent a, a very similar email out to parents regarding looking at the drop-off procedures. So we, we have some plans to make some changes to the drop-off procedures, parking out there in the morning, and variety of things, so we're going to make sure that parents involved in that decision made. Um, I don't know if you included this correspondence, uh, there was also correspondence about the parents on bus route number one. I moved it on. I clicked on it, and say it out. So, um, and I was going to mention this on super ten record. So there was, and bus route number one ran into a specially challenging section of Rotten Row. We had to make some changes to the pickup, um, so we just wanted to make sure that we communicated that out to the parents. We worked with the Carlisle Police Department, Better Transportation, to make that all work out, so that we wouldn't have any safety concerns going forward. Um, also, we are, we sent out the, the copy of the dish. We kept our own, this new student information.
Nancy.
So, um, we're also sending something out today to parents regarding, we are looking at the new student information system, and we wanted to have a, a coffee to invite parents to talk about that, particularly share what the potentials of some of these systems are, and hear what their needs and what parents would like to see, and be able to do, working with those systems, so we've got that sound. And then the last, the last communication went out today, fairly, very serious in nature, and I might as well just spill it so that it took place. So yesterday afternoon was brought to my attention about some graffiti in one of the bathrooms. That there was, there was, there was an offensive, horrible racist word that was used in the bathroom. This morning, I met with Matt, and Matt took it on, and we had a press seat back together, and we looked at what our response was going to be, how we were going to deal with that. We did engage the Carlisle Police Department, and that's what he meant to be looking at there. Uh, we are conducting the investigation. Matt penned a letter that expressed our outrage about the system, about the situation, and then he also went around to every middle school class, five, six, seven, eight, and spoke with each, each class, each, so there were four sections, spoke to them about who we are, and what we are about, and our core values, and just didn't pronounce any of the job, and it is, it's very serious, and it is, again, it speaks to our continued work on inclusion and diversity and acceptance, and that, that this is not tolerable, and we're going to take steps to address. So it was a very serious situation, and that's the communication, we include that in the package.
I thought that was a very thorough communication. You know, it was, you know, it came from a very sincere place, and it left no question about what it was seeing, of course, so I appreciate that, and the fact that he went to each classroom to talk his defense.
Brilliant. Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, love. Okay, continuing with your reports.
No, back. So on a bright note, so this is after school opened, so we had a very smooth opening to school, so a special thanks to all of our staff that's here, all some along, so Dennett and Matt and Will Verbins, and Alex and John, who did work, they did on the handbook this summer, but we have people like Nancy Anderson, who's here to keep the place going, also want Amy Smack, our registrar, who did not send a job, some Bev and Jane in the main office, we have Nancy Godley in Suppray, who don't do it, but we have, we have Carrie down in, in receiving, who handles all our POs, come in, our tech department, Scott and Matt, they were here also a lot, I mean, we have people here, you don't know, but they're doing work all some along to make sure that when the teachers do come back, and they come back pretty early, you know, two or three weeks into work, and we're in the classes, and we start getting their work, and everything's in place, and again, custodians staff, they were showing him, they have been showing all some along, and we're going to pull it in, you know, so thanks to all of them for making the school be prepared for what's moving on, and that's all. Special thanks to them. Matt, I keep pointing over there like Matt's still sitting there. Matt is, we welcome Matt, our new principal, he's jumped right in to feed, and he's, he's doing what we expected him to do, he's developing relationships with the teachers and with the students, and just incredibly pleased to have him here. I mentioned the incident already, uh, I mentioned the rotten bus issue that we had to deal with. Also, at the end of the summer, we did have our fire department inspection, which we passed thanks to David's work, and Karen that, and we did our first fire evacuation drill for the first week of school, as we traditionally do, and I think we had a record. We are scheduled for a bus evacuation safety talk with Chief Fisher on September twenty-first. Then on the twenty-first, I'm going to be attending a school safety conference with Chief Fisher, and then on the twenty-fifth, Chief Fisher and I are going to attend the Middlesex Superintendent Chief's Breakfast, so we have a big safety meeting for that three, twenty, and September. Um, as we mentioned earlier, we have jumped into the budget processors, although it's only the first full week in school, where I already have the process connection. Uh, middle school parent night, nine-twenty, and then we have the elementary parent night, which is going to be nine-twenty-seven for the week. Uh, we did mention, when David was here, so David is retired, um, I do have a timeline for the process for...
A little higher.
I can share that, so the plan is that we'll be posting that next week, and we're going to put a deadline for October eighth. Um, I am going to bring a committee of representative of the school committee, faculty, custodians, parents, another cooperative committee, some other town offices may be involved, I suppose Josh is going to be here, so you can talk about the municipal...
Piece of bed, yeah.
Committee, um, but, but that's the plan, and hopefully, if we spaced out the timeline, it'd be great if we could identify a person by, until late October, and that would give them some time for five, four or five weeks, they may have to give notice of where they are, and that'd give them a few weeks of the last, maybe, so that's the, that's the plan. And, um, and contract negotiations continue with the...
Great. We've been busy.
All right. Any members' reports? Christine, you meet yet?
Uh, yeah, we meet twice a month, so I, I don't, I don't think there's anything besides what Melinda just shared about the coffees that is really recorded out, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to say two things. One is, I just wanted to say, in open meeting, because there was some question about, um, you know, posting meetings, and I want to reiterate the process that Carlisle, Town Carlisle follows for posting meetings, they're all posted at town hall. It used to be that they had secondary posting outside the building, but that's been recently updated with the, with our website, being updated at the town hall, and now, um, the meeting schedules and agendas are all available online, which is fantastic. And then for the school committee, um, school committee meetings?
Yeah, I looked at the calendar, I can see our meetings on the calendar.
They are there.
Okay, thank you.
The town...
They're on, they're on the town website.
With the agenda?
No, there's a link, I think, over there.
Yeah, there's a link to the agenda, um, and then when, uh, the minutes are approved, they are submitted to town clerk, and those are all submitted. So that's available on the town, on the town's website.
Were you uploading that, Nancy?
I just sent it over.
Yeah, that's the, that's the process. Um, yeah. That's the process for, um...
It will be posted as an internal bulletin board, just not, it's no longer going to be outside the building.
Correct. The secondary, um, posting is now on, is on the website, so they changed that.
And the communication with the mosquito is... Does the mosquito, we had this conversation a little time ago, does the mosquito go grab that to post into the paper, or do we push it to you?
No, we, we grab. You're always welcome to push.
I'm trying to do that more.
I love it.
But it was a little, we had one meeting, I think we had a time...
The time was wrong. It's the July meeting.
Yeah, it was posted at seven, it was six.
So in addition to that...
It was posted at six, but it was...
The Carlisle School also posts our meetings and packets and, and minutes on our, on our website.
Thanks to Chris, our community.
Yeah.
Well, Nancy's always been doing it. It's always been, been there, but it's there. Um, yeah, so...
So, and the other thing I just wanted to, if I, if I may, give a really brief update about, um, the work, the ongoing work, um, of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, the Patres Committee, because I think it's directly relevant to, um, you know, the school community, especially in that kids are out and about now, going to Kimball's, cross-country team's going to be out running. Um, I wanted to let people know a couple of things. Over the summer, we've been very busy working on a couple of grant applications to get funding from the state of Massachusetts to make some improvements, um, infrastructure improvements in town, um, in town center. Um, we'd be adding a sidewalk segment from East Street to the library crosswalk, um, and making some improvements on Rotary, that would, um, encourage traffic to slow down a little bit going through Rotary. So we're submitting that grant application to Complete Streets presently, and we should hear back about that in December. Um, those, those will also, um, that grant funding would also allow us to implement, um, safety measures at crosswalks on the main roads in Carlisle, on Bedford Road, there are specifically three crosswalks that are being examined, and that, um, was a result of a public forum that was held last year, I think, I don't know, there was, there was a, it was attended by school, um, as a whole community, um, and I know it was one administrator was there. Um, so we're looking for the funding to implement those changes, and, um, doing a crosswalk study right now to get some recommendations for an engineering term. And the second, um, the second infrastructure improvement involves expanding pedestrian access on Route two-twenty-five Bedford Road from, um, the grant application that we submitted for Mass Works, uh, we have a sidewalk starting at the intersection of Church Street and two-twenty-five, so where students come down that hill, um, right now there is no crosswalk, and, um, a lot of times the students will be seen trying to cross that road, and if there's a limited sight line there in the curve, so this would, um, you know, provide funding for the installation of a sidewalk in front of the cemetery, right down to that crosswalk at Vantiv Davis. So we give, um, students access to Vantiv Davis playing fields, as well as if they were going to Kimball's, and they have a safe way to do that. So the, um, uh, sidewalk will start there, and it would go, um, to the extent of one point two miles to the Floss Farm Trailhead. So that would bring, um, the pathway to its full, basically its full, um...
That's a grant that's not CBA.
No, that's a part of a Mass, that's Mass Works. Um, this is an infrastructure grant being available from the state of Massachusetts, and there's a small portion of that funding available for small towns like us. So if you have, um, less than seventy thousand population, you're eligible to apply for small-town rural assistance. Um, just as a comparison, Box, Boxborough received a Mass Works grant to install a one point one mile sidewalk, you know, in, on one of their main roads, too. Um, it took them a few years, they applied four times, but, you know, um, hopefully, you know, will, it's competitive, so we'll see. Um, the grant would provide construction funding for that, so it would be, you know, fantastic for improving safety and providing pedestrian access, um, and it, it's just one spoke of the, you know, pathway system that's part of the vision for Carlisle. The other thing that is relevant right now is, um, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee has, uh, put forth a recommendation to the Board of Selectment to lower speed limits in town center where roadside pathways exist. So, um, there will be a public, an input session, a public hearing this Monday at the school at seven PM, um, for residents to come and give input regarding the speed, proposed speed limit change. So, um, I encourage anyone who has input to attend.
That's great. Um, I should backtrack. Um, there's a, going to be a special town meeting that's been pushed by Concord, because they, they're looking for study funding because of water issues and parking issues on the campus. They feel like they should do a study of the whole campus to find out what can and can't be done to make good choices along the way. So that meeting is coming up in October, the special meeting for Concord that there's going to.
Concord's having their special town meeting on October first, and Carlisle is scheduled for October second. And it'll be the two warrant articles, one for $100,000 for investing for specific projects.
Yep.
And then the other warrant article, number two, is for the feasibility study to address parking, lights, paving, and some of the other things that the engineers look at would be the lack of bathrooms, you know, to bring that stadium into compliance, bathrooms, and possible other things that could be done on campus.
Right. Instead of doing a study about these three things, they're doing a study of the whole facility to find out if we're going to someday build a field house, we need to take that into consideration now, the parking.
But that was very, I have to say, that there was, my understanding was very little concentration offered to the Carlisle town government in that process.
Well, I know that the superintendent met twice with the selectmen. One was last night.
Last night, but that town meeting was put on the calendar without much process regarding Carlos. I just want to get that.
No, no. And I have to say, I sat in those meetings concerned that they were just pushing...
They just do what they want to do and then they put a meeting on us. So I think from a process standpoint, that message, I'll say publicly, that I think it needs to be... There needs to be more attention paid. We're only 25 percent. But we are 25 percent. We have a block.
Right, right. I think that the reason it felt, the reason it was rushed is because they're trying to meet deadlines for funding that push their agenda faster. No, I know.
They Christmas treat the thing by adding another one. I mean, they did their process the way they wanted to be, period.
You know, when they came to the Board of Selectment the first time, what struck me was that the warrant, the language of the warrant article had already been approved in Concord, which meant that there was no flexibility for Carlisle to make any changes based on our feedback, some of which was very, you know...
And either the Selectmen or the planning committee, I think, is supporting, I think, the settlement.
Well, that discussion is still, you guys have it, I think.
But what is going on with that?
Just to mention, there is a third warrant article, and it's for the Complete Streets program. The grant is, the grant that we submitted for $400,000 for those town center improvements, we'd only pay for construction. Therefore, if we get the grant, we would need some funds for the design work. So there is a third warrant article, a special meeting for Carlisle that specifically relates to that. No, because it's, you know, it's... We were just, we're just in the process of submitting the grant. And it's been discussed at a couple of town meetings, or a couple of...
So it's been granted and it's rejected, then?
So we, we... So right now, the plan, you know, is to present it at that town meeting. And it would be contingent on us receiving the funding. So if Carlisle receives the funding, then we would be able to have access to design. Yeah, to do that. And so, you know, it's a great deal for Carlisle because we would get $400,000 to make infrastructure improvements that we'd be kicking in, you know, about 15 percent in design.
All right. Great. One more thing is, because you reminded me, there's also, and we don't know whether it's Monday or Tuesday, but there's a grant through, I think, Council on Aging for Transportation. And I just want to mention, Susan's not here, but Susan did a great job. We had a very difficult issue with one of our graduated eighth graders who is going to show the tech and needed transportation. It was a new thing for us and it was quite expensive. Susan researched a number of alternatives. David Klein at COA was very helpful. So we solved that problem and the family's happy with the outcome. But it also opened for us...
A relationship.
A relationship and possible alternatives to multi-generational transportation in the future. So there's a lot of things going on that I don't want to dive into now, but there's a meeting, but a grant, and there's some ability to maybe look at that transportation problem as a town thing, not as a council aging thing or school thing. You know, as we have these needs of children for whom we're responsible, we being the town to go to vocational schools or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Warrants, so do we... You just read them off or who's Susan going to say?
All right, so...
You can put it in the record.
Sure. So the warrants to read to the record are number zero nine one, zero eight one nine for $241,010.72. Warrant number zero five one nine for $222,963.51.
You should notice, notice, know...
Oh, the payroll warrants.
Payroll.
Okay. And then accounts payable warrant thirteen nineteen for $49,400.38. And accounts payable warrant for number seven one nine for $145,726.96. Accounts payable warrant number ten nineteen, oops, for $63,849.35. And payroll warrant fourteen nineteen for $357,000, $357,124,76. And accounts payable warrant number sixteen nineteen for $28,711.78. I only have the...
Accounts payable warrant number one eight one nine for $40,987.47.
All right. Thank you.
Now, do we... Why are there three payroll warrants in this section?
Does it fall that...
I don't know.
There were that many Fridays or I don't know.
Susan, you know. Okay. So action items, I would entertain a motion to nominate a new and a new member for a warrant review and signature. Christine, would you like to make such a motion?
I would like to make that motion. Don't you say no?
So make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we identify a school committee member to sign the warrants.
Do you have a... Can you have her on?
I would like to recommend Melissa Gambino.
Because she shouldn't second her own. I would second her. Any further discussion?
Happy to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then she carried two, is it? No. Two or three, you could...
She thinks she'd be great.
So any other business? Citizens comments? Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Yes. And you have to state your name and your address.
My name is Carrie Patel. I live in 36 Block, Charlotte.
This week.
This, yeah. Just getting back to in the beginning program, you spoke about restructuring of the middle school. I'm not expecting you to give a whole dissertation on this now, but I'm just wondering what your... I, when you said that, there was just a question mark on my face. Just because there's less students, there's still four main courses in middle school. Like how, I don't know, that concerned me a little. Because I'm like, just because there's less kids, they still each made that social, you know? And then you said something about double classes and like double classes. That's a lot of kid programming.
It's not for us to determine the solution. We're challenging the administration and the teachers to, as I said later, rethink the four, what I call the four by four. Four grades, four sections.
Right.
Boom, 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 boom. It's very... It's okay at a certain size, but it's very regimented. The school population is likely to fluctuate between, let's say, sixty and eighty for a number of years. It works well at eighty. It's economical at eighty. It's not so economical at sixty. So that's the challenge is, are there other ways to look at that problem?
But keep it simple.
That is definitely something.
You would never second a first.
Is on my radar. I'm concerned about that.
The parents become...
A sense of volunteer.
Because I understand that the school committee especially has to worry about the economics.